All right, I am gonna call to order the meeting of the Madison Board of Selecting. It is Monday. Four thirty, first order of those will be put in.
I'll make the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, visible with liberty and justice for all.
We have the April tenth minutes of public hearing that were tabled until today. It was just me, Jim. Oh, sorry, me, Rick, and Jake. Motion from one of you two fellows to peruse.
Second.
Motion by Jim, second by Jake.
Okay.
Motion by Rick, second by Jake. All is in favor. And two abstentions, I assume. All right, and approval of minutes from April fifteenth.
There was one thing I noticed, um, pine beetle, not pine needle infestation.
Which, um, which, where were we?
Second bullet point.
Pine needle.
Yes. Beetle. Beetle.
That is, that is pine needle infestation.
Yeah.
Lot of that.
Do we have a motion to approve as amended?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes on April fifteenth.
Second.
Motion by Joy, second by Jim, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I abstain.
And abstention. And the non-public from April fifteenth. Motion to approve those minutes.
Do we have to note that Jake recused?
It was in.
Is it in him? Oh, did I do?
Yes.
Oh, sorry.
I'll make a motion.
Did I?
You did.
Yep.
Motion by Jim.
You're not seeing it either, or where is it?
I know I wrote it somewhere.
Yeah, no, I saw it in.
Maybe not.
I swear, I read it.
Me too.
Did I do it in the?
You did it in the email, I thought, but it wasn't. Yeah.
Because I read that I recused myself and left the room.
Yeah, you did.
Yeah, where the heck did I put that? Oh, there it is, it's not in bold. Selecting Bowe recused.
Oh, there it is.
On the bow, yeah, there you go. Like, I know I read that.
Are you going to motion from Jim?
Yep.
Second.
Second from Joy, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I abstain.
Sorry, two abstentions. All right. Prove the manifest, payroll thirty-four thousand one hundred sixteen dollars and thirty-eight cents. Payroll liabilities ten thousand four hundred sixty-eight dollars and seventy cents. Accounts payable eighty-three thousand two hundred eight dollars and forty-five cents. Two hundred thousand dollars to the elementary school for a total of three hundred twenty-seven thousand seven hundred ninety-three dollars and fifty-three cents. Motion to approve the minutes.
Motion.
Motion by Jake.
Second.
Second by Jim, all those in favor?
Aye.
Public comment. Perfect. No public comment. Pivots.
There's three.
Three. One for you.
Oh, thanks.
One for you. You guys can tie it over that one. Yep.
And what was the scope again? This was for the six rows that were identified as?
Six rows in total? Four row.
I got one. You want the number?
Four.
Three eighty-two, two sixty-four.
It's cheaper than mine. Three eighty-two, two sixty-four.
Right, that's four forty-one, one twenty-two.
You've got it on, it's on the last page. It's one line, it's a one-liner. One more, one more page. Just roll down to the next page.
One more, now three ninety-three.
Three, three ninety-three, zero, zero, six, point five oh.
All right, so Pike came in the cheapest. What was their total, I'm sorry? Pike's total was three hundred eighty-two thousand two hundred sixty-four dollars. Would it be too much to ask you guys to read the, the unit number, the cost? Like, how much per ton? And how much per square yard for the reclaim?
Hundred and fifteen a ton, Brian.
Hundred and fifteen a ton at Brian's, is that across the border?
The shim is one, it's one eleven.
Pike across the board is ninety-five, eighty-five a ton.
Shim is one oh four, overly one oh four. Binder is one thirteen, thirty-five.
I just want to make sure we're not missing any of these notes.
Which, Josh, do you call stuff here which road came off the list? Because I thought they were.
Monty Hill.
Monty Hill, right, we were at the top.
But there was another one, though, I thought, no?
I don't think so.
Okay.
We have five on it, I don't know if everyone wants to.
Yeah, four is pine, and four is pine extension.
Yeah, yeah.
Joe's hill, pine hill and town line.
Four.
It's four.
On that one, it's really four.
It's all I saw on Pike's that maybe.
You done with that one, Joy?
I just didn't pull the extension off, the pine needle extension, it's all just pine.
Gotcha, okay. I've seen anything crazy on it, really. Josh, do you have anything you want to add?
No, I just was hoping I could take a look at them before and went over them individually.
Yep.
Make sure that's all apples to apples before you guys made a decision.
Yep, makes sense. I don't see anything crazy, but I'm not expert in this.
Can't see that.
This one. So. Are you good with us making the decision at our next meeting then?
Yeah, or, yeah.
Unless you want to go upstairs and we can come last.
I don't know, I'll, so, so, I'm sorry. I don't think the plant opens up till May fifteenth.
Well, our next meeting's on the thirteenth, is that right?
What's that?
Yes, yeah. So, you guys, this board okay with letting Josh compare these so we know we're getting apples to apples and then making a decision on the thirteenth?
One hundred percent.
That's what we'll do then. Cruiser paperwork. Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I should grab a copy of that in the morning.
You don't, okay.
We just.
Linda, take care of it.
Do you trust his mouth?
Well, give him the, give him the.
Don't trust him with the original.
Can't trust that.
That's on tape, too. Forever.
Don't trust anybody with the originals.
Now you say that.
I don't see anything in this agreement to spark that. Has anybody else noticed anything?
Seems pretty economical, if you ask me.
Things I was telling Adam earlier was that he used the fourteen thousand three hundred and fifty as well, we appropriated that town meeting. He used that total number, because when he did give it to me, it was kind of an estimate. We weren't exactly sure, depending on what the rate came in at, but he used that whole number as the first payment and then divided out the balance for four years. So the subsequent payments are a little bit less than that original amount.
And then the principal's, the approved at town meeting was sixty-three thousand?
Right.
Okay, and that, so the principal's sixty-three thousand and then the interest is eight thousand over five years.
Right. And we're paying in advance versus in arrears is how it usually is, and so we're paying a little less interest.
Yep.
Overall, because we have to send that check along back with this paperwork for that cruiser. And then Jim's got, he's got all the information for the most part that he needs.
They're building it somewhere.
Okay. Okay.
It's a shell, this one.
Yeah, it's, it's, I don't think there's anything different. I actually used an old lease to make sure I was filling everything out right, so I didn't notice anything different. Ones in the past. Yeah, they don't fill it in until they actually have. Because we still have paperwork in here that said nothing, said don't sign here, because we have to wait until we actually receive it.
How is the, I'm gonna be a total panther. The warrant article was written to, for sixty-three thousand dollars, but that covers principal, not interest, but the interest is nominal, eighty thousand dollars. So, but the, this, the warrant article was exactly sixty-three thousand?
It was, exactly, yep.
Okay, and then did the warrant article also say outfitting, or that was?
I believe it.
Yeah, because that was.
So.
Article eight, I see.
So this, this covers the outfitting as well?
Yes. And when, it might be a little shy, you were afraid?
Because of the tariffs.
Yeah.
Yeah, he, it was, he was high in his estimate to begin with.
But he said it's a little high, yeah.
Yeah, so I'm, I'm letting him take the estimations, but we're planning ahead, so.
Anything over and above the sixty-three thousand would have to come out of your budget, pretty much, so.
Does he one of those, if once you get the car coming, will he order all his stuff, so?
Trying to order most of it right now.
So when it's?
Two to three months, right?
Yeah. He needed at least a month or two lead out for getting it.
Okay.
So we're kind of on track for everything that comes at once.
So it'll be sitting there when the car comes in?
Yep.
Article eight does say lease-in outfit.
So the outfitting is part of the lease?
Yes.
How much is the outfitting separate?
It's about ten thousand, estimated.
Yeah, just wondering if there's any way that you could.
On outfitting. Oh, buy it outright?
Yeah, I didn't know if it was.
The car or the equipment?
Adding the equipment to it.
I don't know. I just may be throwing your budget in.
Yeah, I mean, I suppose you could, I mean, basically paying for one thing. I, I don't know how it works, if it's all attached, but.
I don't know, if you did two warrant articles, one to lease portion of it and one to just pay for the outfitting.
Could he up his budget when, the year of the cruiser and then just not the next year?
Yeah.
In his equipment line?
I mean.
Might be the easiest way.
Separate, yeah.
Yep.
I don't think, I don't think anyone's ever done that, but.
Yeah, no.
No, we've added it always to the warrant article when we do them, but, I mean, it could, if that's.
You're talking eight hundred bucks.
Yeah.
In interest, over five years.
But if we went on to buy it, we could.
Just me next time.
All right. Do we have a motion to sign this lease program?
Sumo.
Motion by Rick. Second. Second by Jake, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So we want to move that down to signature items, we want to sign it now.
It's mostly all you, anyway, so.
Perfect.
Just the way you like it.
Yes.
Nothing on the whole business. He changed my agenda, Linda.
He did?
Yeah. He didn't list.
Oh, I didn't list the people, well, I was, well, yeah, I was running out of room.
Joy, do you have a list?
Uh, duh, duh. Um, three folks from New Hampshire Department of Environmental Services came to visit on Monday. We talked to PFAS, and they're here for several hours. We did a little walk around, they saw where the, um, the system, the water filtration system is going to go in the fire department. They said a lot of towns have hired consultants to kind of oversee the installation of the systems, but they said, given where we are, that they don't think it's necessary for us to do it, because we seem to be on top of it. That means we do get to charge for, build into the grant administrative time, so we're into time or my time or anything that they've done for this. We get to bill it, it's built within the grant. My time is obviously free, so I won't be billing anything, obviously, for it, but that also just gives us more money towards the systems. So we're saving on consulting fees and, um, yeah, because it's more money to pay towards the, um, the systems and the testing and the continued maintenance of it. Grant covers for a year, everything that we need for a year, and if for some reason it doesn't cover it, that's we're testing for additional properties this spring and they need, say they need to be covered. Or properties that we've tested that were low, and if they go over, this is just more money to help cover it. And if we don't use it all, obviously, it goes back. If we need more, they said other towns aren't necessarily using it all, so there could go more back into the kitty to help us if we need. Yep, so that was good. We're installing a flow meter for the fire department, um, because we need to have a pretty accurate flow rate. Originally, we looked it up, um, in the D E S well database, well-registered database, and when it was initially installed, it was five gallons per minute. And then might give us information for when Hartley replaced the pump several years ago, and that was also five gallons per minute. And I have to contact Haley, who did, um, a pump replacement in twenty twenty, to see if they were five gallons per minute and then the flow meters. Because we kind of have to demonstrate not just a one-time shot of how much, what's the flow rate, we have to kind of have a bit of a, a look over time. So Lyons is getting the initial, uh, estimate for that. I've drafted, we have to do an official design standard document, which I've drafted, and it includes, um, a lot of detail about what's our tolerance, like, all kinds of specifications that I talked out with D E S. And we'll send that, we'll put that together, I put it together and gotten a preliminary approval from them. But they need all the results of the water testing and they need, um, we need the flow rate. And then they'll approve that, basically, it's an RFP package, and then we'll send that out to three vendors. And then they choose the vendor based on who comes in the best price. So that's kind of out of our hands in order to get the grant, so that's fine. They know what they're doing. At this point, it's the five residential wells and the one public water system. I was working with Doug Sayer at D E S about this, becoming an official public water system. Talked to him again today, and he's working with the other folks from D E S to kind of, the timing of it. Obviously, nobody's, it's not drinking water now until we mediate the PFAS. So we're just kind of doing, determining an order of operations as to how all that happens. So let's say, send the RFP, they did the preliminary approval, the. Let's see, we're gonna have to do an environmental review, which, again, the folks who are here would be doing that environmental review. They said that's no big deal, they gave me an application. Oh, Linda, I don't know if you have it or if Mike has it. The original application for the grant, not the one that we put together most recently with all the, like, the Primex information and stuff. It's the original online one that Mike submitted, like, a pre-application or a pre-qualification, something. Because they said there's a project name in there that he would have put in, and we need that project name to put into the grant.
I'll see what I can find.
Okay. Oh, and then, um, there is money, state money for properties that are above EPA limits but below New Hampshire D E S PFAS limits. And they recommended that the three properties that we have in that category right now, that we let them know that if they have an installation date for a water filtration system prior to May seventh, they can, the installation of that prior to May seventh. But the, uh, their application and having a date as of May seventh, uh, they can get upwards of five thousand dollars towards having, um, an installation, a system put in. And that would be about five thousand dollars, so they could basically get one for free. And if their numbers go above New Hampshire limits, then it falls under us, but it will already have been installed and stuff, so.
So we need to let them know soon?
Yep.
Seventh is coming up quick.
Yep.
I have a question.
Yep.
You used the term public system?
Public water system.
Public water system.
Non-transient, non-community public water system for the well behind the library, because it serves twenty-five people year-round.
And what does that bring, uh, in terms of regulation?
We have to test it for the first year, um, there's, um, there's a good amount of testing to make sure that it's. It meet, it's basically the basic water testing that you would do at home, plus a couple extra parameters. So that'll have to happen a few times in the first year, and then by an operator like Lyons or, um, what's the name? Not Iron Mountain, that's the.
Simply Water.
Hmm?
Simply Water. Iron Mountains one, Simply Water is another.
It is Iron Mountain, okay, because Iron Mountain is also a, a I T company that, like, stores hard to.
Yeah, they're, they're the ones in Portland.
Yeah. Yep, so a company like that serves as an operator, a public water systems operator, and then are certified by the state to do the testing.
Okay, the reason I ask that, I know that they're highly regulated, so I just.
Yep.
What's that gonna, to do us in terms of regulating, what those regulations gonna mean in terms of cost?
Right, so the first year, it's around three thousand, but then it just goes down to every, I think, annual testing.
The contract, or is it somebody locally?
Yep. Yep. Yeah, like, it would be like an FX line, there's no mountain or simply water.
Okay, I would just advise we approach this cautiously, because some of those costs can be extraordinary.
Yep, they're not. Yeah, it's just, it'll be a couple hundred dollars a year, my understanding.
Back to the notification of these, who's doing that notification?
Um, I would like to do it, I can either do it by phone or in writing, and just let them know that they have their test results already. And that's because they're above EPA but below New Hampshire, that they, and I can give them only to the, um.
I just want to make sure it gets done, that's all.
Yep.
Doesn't slip through the cracks.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
Is, is calling us a public water system, is there a benefit to that?
Um, potential more funding.
Because it is a pain in the neck. No, seriously, I mean, because the one that we had at the ball field got deemed a public water system and it was, it was a royal pain in the neck. I mean, I, if, if there's benefits to it, then that's the important thing, but.
Yeah, and I talked to Doug, I talked to Doug just before the meeting, I'm sorry, did you?
No, I'm not.
Sorry, sorry. So he said if the ball field is truly just irrigation, we don't have to worry about it.
Right, and it's had.
He said if there is even a bubbler tied in to the system, then.
We did, and it got, well, it got tore off the building twice, and then I said, I'm not putting it back. So that's when it wasn't a public water system anymore.
Yep, good, no, that's good, because, again, if, if there's even a bubbler connected to the system, then we can qualify so that it's.
Right, and we were, yeah, we were having to, like, every time we, in the spring, when we'd open it up, we'd have to do all this testing, we'd have to test throughout the summer, and then after a while, it was just. Yeah, the fight we were having with whoever didn't want that bubbler there for whatever. It just wasn't, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, so he said if, if it doesn't have a bubbler, basically, um, then it's not a public water system. But even, so, I mean, basically, once we have the PFAS cleared up, um, that water is being drank drunk by library staff and patrons, by fire depart, could, you know, fire department employees and, and pancake breakfasts. People potentially are, may use to make their coffee, used by folks at Town Hall, used by folks at the DPW. It's just best that we be testing it with as much, I don't know, caution as necessary.
Well, we clear it up, but the problem's still there. Probably have to.
Right, so we're, no, but even in terms of making sure that it's, doesn't have bacteria in it, making sure, you know, folks.
I understand.
So once it's cleared up, just every, I mean, how many people are in and out of the library on a monthly basis?
A lot.
When you have a coffee maker down there?
Yeah.
We want it to be good, clean water. Couple other things I forgot about, so they're also doing Wilcox and Barton are consultants for, um, the site investigations and stuff. They're going to be doing testing, they're coming on site May first and second to retest the library well for PFAS, as well as, um, all the properties that they tested previously, plus the additional four. They're working with a survey company and doing a drone survey, they have to put targets to do, um, GPS coordinates and topographical, um, information. And, um, so that's happening this week and next week, um, the water testing and the drone surveys and stuff like that. So last week, they sent out letters to all the residents that are affected to get their approval and stuff. And there's one, um, property owner that they wanted to put kind of a target in their backyard, because they just happen to have a clearing out behind the library. So, um, that was a property owner that we haven't been able to get a hold of to even test their water. So they understand that they might have to adjust that, um, if they can't get a hold of them to put the target in or to test their water. I think that's, that's it.
Have we done anything with testing and people who've been exposed to this stuff?
We have not. We've had that conversation, I think it was the last meeting.
I remember, I just wondered if I knew anything.
No.
Good.
I didn't make photocopies of the stuff that we, the PFAS stuff, the, for the firefighters to get to Mike, Linda, you didn't happen to do that, did you?
I didn't, no.
Okay.
But, because I thought there was an additional, something that was going to go with it.
Okay.
Beyond that, you were going to write a summary or something like that, was it? There was something that was going to get added to just that, that, that printout that we had.
Trying to remember, I think that, was that two conversations ago, or was it the last one, he was just going to get the, we decided not to summarize, that we were just going to give what it was? I'd have to go back and look at the.
But no, I didn't, I didn't do anything.
All right, have in those minutes. Yeah, and I'd like, if it's okay with Chief Brooks, to be available to the firefighters if they have questions. And then, yeah, I don't know what to do, I mean, a good thing to do would be.
Test.
Offer, or at least give folks an information sheet, maybe that's what it was, giving them an information sheet.
Everybody who's been exposed to it, I think, uh, in, in these areas, should at least have the opportunity to test it. Simply because of the accumulations that they could have.
Right.
That's concerning to me, and, uh, if we could offer it, if we had a way to pay for it, we don't, number one, we don't know what the test, I believe it's a blood test.
It is.
Do we know how much it is?
We do not.
If the grant doesn't cover it, correct? That was, we discussed.
The grant, yeah, the grant is specific for the water system.
Right.
But somebody will look into federal money for the, the testing, I thought.
I think we talked about that at the last meeting.
Yes, the federal, the federal money for the blood test. We talked about that, I don't think you were at that.
We did, but, yeah, and I think, I don't think we should dawdle here, I think we should take some action and, and at least make the offer and have some idea of what it's going to cost us, we're going to get the money.
Yeah, there were, I had pulled a bunch of data sheets months ago, um, about testing, and at the time, it was, because it was just to the general public. It wasn't about any specific situation, to the general public, it was, you know, go to your primary care, if they, you know, if they agree that it's recommended, then they'll facilitate it. But, yeah, that's it.
If I recall correctly, we, you were going to look into see if there was other federal funding for the texting.
Okay.
Because you were looking into the grants for, and this may have been a while ago, but you were already looking into the grants for the systems, you were going to check and see if there was something available for testing. Don't quote me, but that's what I.
I believe you.
But even to the extent that we get reimbursed, we can at least get it done.
Yeah, even if we don't get reimbursed, what's our obligation to doing it?
Are you all set, Joy? Or please name the chairman.
No.
Oh, um, with the cable contract, the public notice went in the newspaper, the Republic, that the cable contract is available, that it's, um, up in Town Hall and folks can come view it. Because they're coming in May twelfth, is it?
Thirteenth.
Thirteenth, May thirteenth, we.
That's when the public hearing is.
Okay. Because there'll be the public hearing for the cable contract. When we have the non-public to review it internally, um, can a Mad TV rep be present at that meeting to provide their input? When we have the non-public to review it internally, can a MAD TV rep be present at that meeting to provide their input?
I think that's up to us, isn't it?
Yeah, it would be up to you, it's, because you're meeting with your attorney.
But it's.
What would be the purpose of that?
It's a non-meeting, not a non-public.
Correct, it's a non-meeting.
Um, because it directly affects them and their business and everything that they do.
Okay, because they try to spend all of those lines?
Hmm?
Okay, I understand.
The, the attorney's gonna be at the public hearing too, to, available to answer questions and things too.
Can a rep come to the pre-meeting or?
I don't think I have a problem with it. Just trying to talk on it for a minute, but I don't. Should be fine. But it's up to everybody. You want to make a motion? Because I think we would need a formal motion to allow somebody else to attend one of our non-meetings.
Okay, I'll make a motion to invite a MAD TV rep to come to the non-meeting with the attorney to discuss the cable contract.
I'll second it. All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Thank you. And then, looking at the contract, it listed public buildings that are covered, like basically they get, I don't know if it's that they get cable for free? Or that they get like service in for free, I wasn't quite sure.
It's definitely not internet. It's all TV.
Just cable TV.
Correct, this has nothing to do with internet, this is all just cable TV.
Okay.
Yeah.
Got it.
Yeah. So I think there were a couple of buildings that get TV.
Yeah.
Listed in them.
I think I have the contract, my bad. Yeah, but it was, I mean, DPW gets, gets it.
I don't remember who.
I wanna say like this building had the option for it.
Yeah, we don't.
Yeah.
Don't have, well, I don't know.
Yeah, well, like what building even uses it?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, DPW uses it for weather, yeah.
And then the library doesn't use it, cable, okay.
With school on there? I see, I don't remember.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, does the fire department use cable TV for weather or anything like that?
I know we have it, I wouldn't say it's used for anything.
I just wanna make sure, sorry, go ahead.
I was always under the impression that it was, it was free until I took over a sheet when we pay like six bucks a month or something like that.
Yeah, I guess that's the part of the contract that we can discuss next time, but just a matter of what does it mean that it's free? That they run a line in or they actually get free service, because obviously you should, if it's, contract says it's free service, you shouldn't even be paying six bucks a month.
I wonder if it has to do with state taxes? Because sometimes you get things for free but still have to pay the taxes.
Yeah.
To the state, so that may be why.
Well, the MAD TV office, I think, wasn't on the list.
They definitely pay, because that, they're, get it down at the lower garage. No, but I don't, no, there's no TV at that garage, it's just internet at that garage.
Okay.
And.
Even if there's not a TV, you can use like the Spectrum app or whatever and they still charge you some, some, some kind of fee. They don't charge you for the cable box, but they still charge you for cable TV.
If it doesn't have a cable box, then.
Doesn't count as.
It doesn't count towards the franchise fees, I know that much and it's, there's a weird thing there when you get rid of the box and go direct into your TV.
Yeah.
But maybe that's something that Attorney Miller can explain.
Yeah, just clarification on that. All right, thank you.
Rick?
Uh, I don't have anything, I, I do have a question about, in the previous meeting, we were discussing setting up some protections for our roads, we've got the loggers. We're gonna contact the attorney, have we done that and?
No. I will know. I remember, what did come to mind though is that we do have a, a class six logging ordinance for, for when it comes to class six roads and things.
Right.
We wanted, you wanted the attorney to, sorry.
I guess that's, we need a frame of question. My interest is, I don't know why, I think it was, Mr. Chairman asked you to contact the attorney, why did you ask that?
That's a good question.
I think that might be where I landed.
I'd have to go back and read the minutes, I don't remember the discussion.
I guess.
It was an intention.
To see if we, right, if there was some protection for the road and what, what the response would be if the road is damaged, how would we go to get?
Go about getting.
Getting fixed.
Establish policy, what would it look like?
Right, what would it entail?
Right.
Is there already protection in place?
NHMA does, NHMA may have that information too.
Yeah.
But I'd like to get an opinion from the attorney, I'd like to see that.
Right, see if there needs to be something established or if we already have something that
Right.
Kind of umbrella covers the.
Right.
I wanna say there are RSAs that, that govern the kind of protection that we have for our roads when someone damages them already. But the, the problem with it is actually proving who made, did the damages.
Well, I had an experience, I suppose I probably had a.
Yeah, I remember, yeah.
Road damage from logging and I contacted the then Director of Public Works, not the current one. Who came and looked at it, went and met with a logger, came back and told me that the loggers agreed that when he's done, he'll fix all the damage. I said, well, do you have that in writing? He said, no, I'm gonna take him at his word. That was three and a half or four years ago. So I think, you know, not trying to be a hard headed here, but really, that some of the damage we had was major. And it hasn't been repaired. So, and, and there are areas, there were damages done before and, and the highway department made the repairs, after they were done. So I, I just don't think, based on the bids we saw tonight and the work we're doing in the community, that we have an obligation to protect that. To the extent we can.
So basically, we need to ask Cordell if there's something in place that protects us and how ironclad is it, and do we have any other options? Jim?
Nothing.
Nothing?
Nothing.
Nothing for me, nothing. Nothing for me, other than I promise to everybody out there that the guys are hard at work at that lower field and we will get it done as soon as possible. Linda?
I did, I looked into, I took a webinar on that diesel grant. There's, there are two trucks that potentially are with the DPW that could qualify, it was those two Peterbilt, the two thousand five and two thousand nine. Um, you can make as many applications as you want for as many vehicles as you want. But I guess what I wanted to know from you guys is if I keep moving forward, which, which or both vehicles should I be concentrating on for the application? We can get, from what I understand, it'll be like a seventy thirty is the best we could get on the thing. But if we, if you want me to go for two new vehicles, you gotta buy two new vehicles, see what I'm saying?
Yeah, if you get it, you have to.
Right, yeah, if, well, not, I suppose you wouldn't have to, but if they don't, if they approve us for the two thousand five and not the two thousand nine and you wanna get rid of one and not the other, because you have to scrap the vehicle, you have to bore like a three inch hole through the engine and cut the chassis something or other and.
One of those Cashman poker or deals, huh? That's.
You know how much fun it was to blow those up though? I was wondering if it built out when that came through.
Yeah.
Liquid glass right now.
Who's, who's gonna haul that drill? That seems.
That drill.
Hold this, hold this, hold this.
Is this a reimbursement grant?
Seventy thirty split.
You have to buy the vehicle upfront, get the money back.
I, I believe we do, we'd have to put it on our warrant, and they understand that we have to the end of twenty twenty seven to finish the whole thing up. So it could go on next year's warrant, we could get a vehicle next year, we could actually wait until twenty twenty seven to do it, if you got it. We are like the best we could, so there's two sets of towns, there's a hundred towns that automatically have a better chance at this than we do. And it's all based on your poverty level of your town, so there's fifty towns that are, it is, the way you get this is on a point system. So you accumulate points and that puts you at the top of the list. So these first fifty towns automatically get ten points on their application because they have a certain percentage of people who live under the poverty line. Second set of fifty towns automatically get a five point up when that, and then everybody else can still apply. But you know there's a hundred towns that potentially have already a little bit of a better number than you do.
Maybe worth trying to do one and see what happens.
Yeah, I just go, I'm gonna do the older one.
Just to get a feel for it.
And it is saying that there's potentially another five million dollars that could be freed up at the end of the year to do another round of vehicles. They're not sure yet, but there's, this is all from that Volkswagen thing.
I'm just gonna suggest not to jump on the oldest one, I'd ask DPW.
I was just gonna say, which one's the worst?
The older one might be a little bit better of a truck than the two thousand. What's the one that needs replacing first?
I mean, for seventy thirty, if, if we can do it.
Right.
Rather than doing it for a hundred percent when it does fail.
Right.
The other few, other little things was that it has to be in working order and has to, you have to expect it to at least work for another year for you to be able to put it into this. Like you couldn't have it scrapped out back already.
We kept that, we kept that griddle going, we can keep the truck going.
Yeah, true.
So you wanna talk to Josh and figure out which one of those trucks would be better suited to get rid of first? And we'll go forward, start working the process on one truck.
So looking at the CIP, we had the two thousand five Peterbilt truck number eleven. Had that year to replace was ASAP, estimated cost two hundred seventy-five thousand. Then we have the two thousand eight Peterbilt dump truck, number twelve, also listed as ASAP, estimated a hundred fifty thousand dollars before financing. So my understanding is those are the two we're looking at?
Yep.
Okay, so yeah, definitely, which one would they want, what's to go for?
Which one needs to be ASAP or?
Right.
Yeah, well, the older truck has got two hundred and ninety thousand miles on it and the two thousand nine or eight, depending on which thing you read, has a little over a hundred thousand.
Yeah.
Two and a half life.
Yeah.
Good half life.
Good for another ten years.
And the other thing is that you have to have an average, or you have to have four thousand miles a year on the truck. And if we divide out the mileage, I mean, I don't know how you would figure it otherwise, how much you put on per year. But they both meet it in terms of mileage.
Thank you for attending that.
It was a question and answer thing, it was pretty interesting.
So, following up on the CIP, do, are we moving forward with the committee? That could kind of help, I'm pissed off. Because we, the town voted for.
Yeah, we need people to apply.
Yeah, I'm gonna put out the call.
Spread the word, you're on TV right now.
Hello, Madison. I'd like to invite you to join a capital improvement planning committee to help us best purchase big things like two hundred twenty-five thousand dollar trucks. So, warrant article was approved to create such a committee and had a member of BOS and planning board and ABC and I think it was two members of the public. I think, something like that, so, public.
Do we, I know that our, the town voted to approve the warrant article, do we need to, as a board, establish the committee or, no, that's done by?
Yeah, it's done already.
It's done already.
Well, actually, I don't know how I was reading, if it gives the selectmen the ability to establish a committee or? Which way that was.
Do we need to formally appoint those members of other committees or boards?
Would, I would assume that's just part of your mechanism for doing it, you always do an oath of office.
Yeah, see if the town will vote to allow the selectmen to appoint a capital improvement committee.
So it sounds like it's established, you guys just get to appoint it?
Yeah, it's already established, we just need to appoint it. So, I'll talk to the planning board and figure out what one of their members.
Here on the budget committee, right?
I don't know, yeah.
Yeah.
We needed two from there?
Um, one from budget, one from BOS, one from planning board?
Okay.
Is that what it said?
Yes.
And then two members of the public?
Okay. So if we tear somebody on the board?
Who we need?
No.
All right. Anything else on that?
No, I was gonna remind you of the public hearing for the cable thing. Auditors are here next week, that's a good time. No, that's actually, it's actually fine, they're, we've got it all figured out, they know exactly where all our stuff is and we get along really good, so. But yeah, they're here next week, so they'll be tooling around.
And our public hearings, four o'clock on the thirteenth, or not the public.
You're not, yeah, your non-meetings at four, public hearings at the meeting at four thirty.
Sloane?
Library's great, I just wanted to publicly thank DPW for leveling out the ground for propane tanks and digging a trench for us. They were really helpful in getting it done, so we can get the generator hooked up.
Perfect. Kimmy?
See, Jake went to some good training a couple weeks ago, the FBI IDA supervisor leadership course. There's three, there's an executive and a command course as well, I've been to one of them. It's a whole trilogy of courses, basically the next step from that is the FBI Academy Chronicle, if you wanna compare it to anything. But it's good for us to be progressing in leadership roles and so Jake took advantage of that. I completed my teaser instructor recertification last week, that's always fun. What I struck tape back day was successful, I sat there yesterday or Saturday, I weighed it myself, we took in just over twenty-eight pounds of mostly pills, I was surprised that we're not alone here this year. One other thing that's come up, not only here in my office, but the Carroll County Chiefs of Police Association meetings is the Program Two Eighty Seven, which is the ICE immigration task force. And I've had an array of folks come in with every type of question and stance on it, as you can imagine. I was just gonna tell this board that in my professional opinion, and I've already made a decision that we're not gonna be involved with it. Mainly because I, just, there's a lot of constitutional issues I have with it. If you look at the list of involved agencies across the country, and even Carroll County in the state of Hampshire, there's only seven. There's just a lot of issues with it. And one of them is the, just ethical policing, profiling fosters that, which we don't want that. A lot of communities have made good relationships with their communities and this is kind of a, can be divisive in that. The other good thing is it's not an issue in Madison, we don't have, we don't have, you know, we don't come across these very often. But I will say that if we do, if there's, you know, one of these individuals is committing a crime, we will continue to do our job as usual. We will take them into custody and treat them like every other individual we make arrests on, so. I just wanted to put that out there, because it's been a week, a couple times a week that I've had folks in my office for hours at a time talking about it. And it's, you know, people have questions or like to discuss it, I'm happy to do so, but that's my stance.
I think that's a right decision.
Yeah, I agree, thank you.
Okay.
That's it.
Michael?
I have nothing to report, other than there's a property owner on North Division Road, I had to inspect category three fire before I'd issue him a permit. And he had a bunch of brush, but he also had a bunch of hardwood logs that he wondered how he could get rid of them. And I asked him to write me a letter saying that he wished to donate them to the old homewave committee, which he did. And I'm just looking for your approval to accept them and utilize the DPW when they have spare time to just pick them up and bring them back here. The intent is to use them for the, for the bean hole.
I'm good. I don't see any doubts.
Yeah.
Sounds good. Perfect, that's all I have tonight.
Thank you for the property.
Are you also gonna absorb the wood from Aldro when they take those trees down?
I hope so.
Yeah, that's the idea, yeah.
That's like. That's like 15, 15 bake off, right?
We use four cord a year. It's always handy, I'd rather have it on hand than have to, have to scrape it up in August.
If you look at those 30 trees, you'll have plenty on hand.
Where do we store it?
Big pile.
I'll bet. You put a lot of room in your front yard, I thought.
That'd be pretty.
Stack it nicely.
You have to work through the tics to get that out.
Probably a lot of people have.
Bad already this year.
Probably a lot of people store it in their backyard.
Signature items.
Oh, yeah. Oh, second public comment.
Oh, go ahead. There's no public.
But still, Tom's in work.
I did have one more item. This topic has a little bit of controversy. We spoke a few weeks ago about waving the P-40 softball league. And I'm not here to ask you to do it again, but I am here to ask you to cut it in half. They are donating manpower and they are donating their team's time and a pavement roller to roll that field on Saturday.
So it'd be 2, 274?
And they're committing to cleaning up after themselves.
They have committed to that, but that is not why I'm asking. I'm asking specifically because they are donating time and equipment that would cost us much more than $200 to rent and get out here.
That's fine. Do you motion for that?
I do.
I'll do that, then, Lynda.
Second.
Motion by Jim, second by Rick, to cut the softball fee from 400 to 200.
We don't have to discuss that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
If you give the manpower, that's not something...
There's a whole, huge pile.
Should we add the second public comment thing to the agenda template?
Everybody goes right to you, am I good?
I thought it was by meeting, choice of yours.
Yeah, it's in the, right here.
That you can do it if you want, if you doesn't have to.
Just the second public comment?
Yeah, it says right.
Okay.
Well, it only says one.
Opportunity for additional public comment and media requests at the end of the meeting will be at the chairman's discretion.
If you have it on your agenda, it's got to be so, and if we don't, then we can't.
We kind of agreed to it, so this would be, it's not a bad idea to have it as a reminder.
This one's just right. Get 25 minutes to fill out.
And then money for Jim.
Just that.
Well, you're going to get your, you're going to get it. That's when you missed a little piece.
Oh, did I?
Oh, yeah, you missed the two, so.
Yeah.
They are quite handy.
Yes.
I had a question on some of the veterans' credits?
Yep.
So, one applicant did not meet like a 90-day criteria?
Correct.
But is there, there was a disability involved? Does that, is there a different disability credit, or is there?
He wasn't deemed disabled by the Veterans Affairs Committee. That would be anything to have to do with disabled. But, yeah, unfortunately, he didn't meet the 90 days.
Yeah, because of, number 12 said, if disability occurred during active or inactive duty for trying to give branch, it was, that line was completed. But it has to be checked somewhere else?
Well, I, the assessor's the one that
Determined.
determined that, that recommendation, and
Okay.
I think his, his first thing was that there wasn't 90 days, period. That's the first criteria that you have to overcome.
Yeah. And if there was a disability thing, or something like that?
I think, if, if, any disability beyond that would have to meet the criteria for the 100% disabled part of it.
And then there were others that, they qualified for B, but not, or the original, but not dash B?
For the...
For the veterans' credit?
Yep, there was, well, so there was two, two applications that applied for the, the new all-veterans credit.
Yeah.
And when Chad reviewed them, he realized that they were actually eligible for the regular, the combat veterans' credit. So he just thought that it would be better to put them in for that instead.
Do we document that somewhere?
Yeah.
It's just in his notes and that's fine?
Actually, I think, yeah, on the, on the flip side of the paper, on the first side.
Yeah, okay.
There's two different places, and then also in the assessing database, there's two choices to pick from.
Okay, so like this is their application, but this is the official record here on the front page?
Correct, yeah, and that's, whatever they got checked off on that one is what they'll get in the assessor's database.
Perfect, thank you.
Spend about 45 minutes reading through all these.
That's what I was just thinking after I signed it.
The ones that they, that they meet the criteria, we don't sign that.
We do, we do, because up top there, there's a granted or denied.
Right.
And that'll get checked off. Some people, when they realize that they, they don't qualify, they don't even bother with the application. But if it actually does come before you, we process it with a denial.
This is required, deny.
Yeah. I'm going to skip you with this one.
It'll get denied when it gets filed, that box up there.
The box will be checked at all.
I was, kept looking at the back, and I knew I wasn't signing that one.
I wasn't sure if it's the best way to put them together, because they don't put the name on them.
On the front?
Both sides. It's a state form, it's not act form.
Still looking, people still...
That'd make it easier. Switch it up, I mean, that's a different line.
This is the other one that was denied.
So, and there was one, I think I did miss. And then I think I called you Jake on some of them, and Jake up on some of them, just whatever the day felt like.
Right. Easy enough.
There's your answer right there. Ah, yeah. That one can skip, Jim.
Yeah.
And that purchase requisition there?
That's for the wing?
Yeah, so Josh called one of the companies to have, if I understand it correctly, like have the, the wing and plow resurfaced, re, whatever the word I'm looking for. And it was like 4,000 something dollars, and he thought that was crazy, so he called another company to see how much they'd call. And they said, "Well, I can give you a whole new one for 2,300 bucks," and something like that, alright.
Done, yeah, half the price.
So. Refurbish, that's the word I was looking for.
Oh, yeah, you got all those signatures. You want to get your one in?
Sure. That's it.
Yeah, basically, you're saying that you know that those two are in charge of doing it, and you'd be the third guy if I came in.
Just in case.
Just in case.
And I've always done them by seniority, so you'd have to be in however you have seniority. Adam and Joy got first dibs.
That's good.
Hey, the least thing my signature's on, the better. I think they've figured out a better way to like sell and buy a vehicle where you don't have to sign 14,000 tires on everything?
Like a mortgage or something.
This one needs my signature, there's no little red arrow, but...
Uh, I don't know, what is, I don't think so. I think that's, I think that's the quote. Isn't it?
Is it one you have to sign when, when you take it?
I think that's the quote for the
Cruiser?
Cruiser?
Yeah, the Molten.
Yeah, that's, yeah.
Yeah.
That's not, that's more there for information.
That we give a couple?
Yeah, they, they carry the
It's all done.
Yep.
Yeah, this one's all done. What's that cruiser one?
Only requires half-train cruiser.
Adam and one from Jim.
And that's the one, okay. Maybe it's like, we're getting a new one, keep it made and fix it. I forget, they should ask Josh. Can you lock on flatbed yet?
Uh, yes, actually.
Okay.
They found someone who's going to actually build the one for
Some money?
$3,800.
Perfect.
So, yeah.
Brand new, $3,000.
Brand new. It's like, I want to say in Vermont, the guy, there's a fabricator there who's going to do it?
Okay.
A brand new one. They found him on
I saw him when he looked at one.
Facebook or Craigslist or something like that, because everything else they looked at was kind of junk.
Yeah.
Probably expensive.
Yeah, I've signed everything, just...
Alright, we're all set, that's it, that's all we got. Do you have your motion to adjourn?
You will have your motion.
Motion by Jim?
The second.
Second by Jake, all those in favor?
Aye.
You better say aye.
Even if he doesn't.